Welcome everyone to this special town hall meeting to discuss the reconstruction of the 24 mile road here in Shelby Township from Hayes to Dequinder Road. If you're tuning in expecting to be watching a taped board meeting, I will just say that you'll have to wait till Saturday as we are having a special town hall meeting. And as you know, if you read in the paper, we just signed an agreement this past Friday to do the fully reconstructed 24 mile road. So if you're wondering why you got the news about this meeting yesterday or the day before, it's because again, we just signed the agreement a couple of days ago. So I want to welcome you here tonight. And also tonight, we have some guests behind me. We have Ms. Shannon Flarkey from Shelby Township Engineers, Fausel Khan and Associates. We also have Mr. Bob Hoffner from the Macomb County Department of Roads. And we have Mr. Steve Mancini from Rickman Construction. And also to my right, we have Mr. Mohammed Jabir from the Detroit Water and Sewerage Department to discuss this project fully, to reconstruct 24 mile road. We do have a picture, if you can put up picture number one, if you have that loaded. Ellen? I think they're looking for it right now. Maybe we don't have any pictures. There we go. As it stands, 24 mile road is one of the poorest roads in our community and in dire need of repair. And of course, such an extensive project as we have, along with the installation of a 42 inch diameter water main, as you can see in this next picture, running parallel to an existing 36 inch water main from Dequinder to Romeo Plank Roads, and will have a significant impact on the community. Original estimates projected an 820 day project that could take three construction seasons to complete, utilizing funds solely from the Detroit Water Sewerage Department, and that only included one lane of reconstructed road. To ensure that both the eastbound and westbound lanes were constructed, officials from Shelby Township, and I do see Mrs. Feiler, one of our trustees, sitting here in the audience. I'm glad she's here tonight, including some other trustees, and also Macomb Township, worked with DWSD Director Sue McCormick, and also Macomb County Director Bob Hoffner, and County Executive Mark Hackel to put together a new plan that will be discussed here tonight. And I see we have Vince Viviano in the audience as well, and I see Mr. Grove, our clerk is here as well. I want to thank you, Mr. Viviano, because I know you attended most of the meetings along with Mr. Hackel. And while it will of course come with many, many headaches, we're hopeful this action will move from what 25 mile is now, as you go to the next picture, to a new road similar to this next picture, and it's all at a cost of less than $500,000. So to start this meeting, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Steve Mancini, who is President of Rickman Construction Incorporated, and that's headquartered in Sterling Heights. It's been in business, I think Steve, you said, since 1965, and specializes in heavy underground construction throughout the Midwest and Florida. Mr. Mancini?
Thank you, Mr. Stathakis. Again, my name is Steve Mancini. I am the President of Rickman Construction. Rickman is Richard Mancini founded the company in 1965. And since then, it's myself, my two brothers, myself and my youngest brother, born, raised, and live here. I live in Clinton Township, and he lives in Troy, so pretty much local to Macomb County our entire lives. I have a other younger brother that runs our Florida office. We do work both in Michigan, Ohio, Florida, and some of the others Midwest states. This type of work, we call it pre-stress concrete pressure pipe, and doing it pretty much my whole career since I was a very young man. So we understand it, road work. We've done a lot of MDOT highway work. We were the contractor that recently did that big northbound expansion on M53 from, I think, 26 to 32 mile road. So both road paving, we don't actually pave, our subcontractors will do the paving, but the paving prep work, all the pipe work will be overseen by our company and even by myself personally. I'm sure you'll see me out there. Just to briefly summarize some of the key important things, our company worked cooperatively with DWSD, Mr. Jabar, Ms. McCormick, Ms. Porter, we were able to, with Mr. Hoffner and the township's assistants, we were able to come up with a plan that basically allowed us to repave the whole road. And what we were able to do is take some monies from some of the staging type operations that we would have had to have done, and instead of, and use that monies to pave the whole road, along with some contributions from the townships. One other major change to the project is we're going to work through the winter. That has a lot of benefit. It's going to take a substantial amount of time off the schedule with two crews working, two mainline crews and a tunnel crew, and then obviously the paving crews. We anticipate a major time savings, and the fact that we're going to be working through the winter, really a less inconvenience. I know there's just no question, a project of this magnitude is going to be a major inconvenience, but when you're working during the winter, it tends to be less of an impact. And also when you shorten the schedule up, obviously it's a less impact to the public. One very important thing, it's part of the original design from the road commission, it's part of the same design today, is that this is going to be one way, eastbound only. As we're working between the mile roads, it's critical for the safety of the public, the motoring public, for the safety of the workers, that that be strictly adhered to. So there will be a strict enforcement, there will be good signage, and probably the most important thing for everybody to understand is to remember and pay attention to that eastbound only traffic, even if it's when you're leaving your subdivision, you may think it's open to westbound, but it really won't be. So keep close attention to that. There's going to be some closures for major crossings of the major roads, but there's plans in place to make that as short and less disruptive as possible.
Mr. Jabir, I just have one question for you. You talked about a timeline before the meeting, and you said that there would be seven phases. Can you explain those seven phases and about how long each phase will take?
Sure. Thank you. My name is Mohammed Jabir, and I represent Detroit Water and Sewerage Department on this project. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be part of this town meeting, township meeting today. We're very excited at Detroit Water and Sewerage about this project. It's been in the planning for some time, and I'm glad to see it come to light right now. This project is part three of three parts, actually, planned to install a 42 inch water main on 24 mile road to run parallel to an existing 36 inch water main feed. And this came out because of an increased water demand in the community here. This project consists of roughly 35,000 feet of 42 inch pre-stressed concrete, and we're very assured and confident to have hired Rickman as the contractor, well-known in this business. I do want to go over the main phases of this project, like Rick had mentioned to me. We divided this project over seven parts, starting at Romeo Plank and moving west all the way to Rochester. And we have a milestone as to when each phase is going to end. Phase number one will start at Romeo Plank all the way to Hayes, and we expect the road to be open up to traffic both ways by the end of November. Okay, of course, it will be still aggregate or dirt road by then, awaiting the next construction season, which would be April next year before we pave it, but it will be suitable for paving, for driving. Now, phase number two, it will be Hayes to Shaner, and our target date is the end of April to make that road available again. The third phase is Shaner to Shelby Parkway, and our target date is end of July of next year before we open it back up to traffic. Phase number four is Shelby Parkway to Van Dyke, okay? And our target is the end of October next year. Now, at that time, we will have the road paved with a base course, and it will be perfect for driving condition. Now, a second crew will work simultaneously here, starting, I guess, you know, mid-August next year, and it will be from Van Dyke to Mound. And phase number six will be Mound to Shelby, and our target is end of October, and then Shelby to Rochester. And that would be January 16th. So I think through this agreement, that representative of the township in Detroit Water and Sewerage and the contractor, we were able to shorten the duration of this contract from three construction seasons to two construction seasons. So of course, that would cut down the traffic nuisance and make the road available, you know, sooner.
Mohammed, I just wanted to mention, if, I think you might have got some of those dates, the west of Van Dyke will start mid-November of this year, and then follow through, I don't have my schedule in front of me, but I think it's going to, the second crew, I think you said August, you may have meant November, if I got my dates right.
Yeah, Mrs. Feiler was just asking me some questions about these dates too, and let me just repeat them, make sure I have them right. So from Hayes to Shaner will be done by the end of April. From Shaner to Shelby will be done by the end of July. From Shelby to Van Dyke will be done by the end of October. And the second crew, which will be simultaneous with the first crew, will be Van Dyke to Mound, that'll be done by the end of April. And then Mound to Shelby sometime July, and then from Shelby to Dequinder by the end of October.
Yes, I think that's correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
And the reason you're calling it seven phases is because in Macomb Township, that's really the first phase. So there's one phase in Macomb Township, and then six phases in Shelby Township.
That's correct.
Everybody okay with that? Ms. Feiler?
It's completed.
She said all, Ms. Feiler said completed by 2015, perhaps?
That is definitely the goal, and you know, with any, we always like to be a little more conservative. The job was scheduled to be done in 2016, but barring any real unforeseen, we believe there's going to be a substantial savings, and our goal, target right now is 2015. It may not necessarily mean that everything is final paved. Obviously, you're going to get base course paving, you're going to make sure you get all your pressure tests, all your bacteria tests before you do final paving, final restoration. So it could fall over the following spring, but we're very hopeful that that's not going to be the case.
And also, I just want to make sure, the headliners, I think you already summarized one crew instead of two, I mean, two crews instead of one, two construction cycles instead of one constructor, I'm sorry.
Instead of three.
Instead of three, and two lanes rather than one lane. So the whole road will be reconstructed.
Full width pavement.
Full width pavement. Mr. Viviano, Mr. Grove, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I'm glad we just finished.
Mr. Viviano, hold on, because I can't hear you at home. Mr. Viviano's question was, you want to know how far they're going to go to going west? How far west will you be going?
The Rochester pump station is the end of the project.
But, but Mr. Viviano said, or Mr. Hackel, I think is going to, on his dime, go all the way to Dequinder.
Are you talking about pipeline or pavement?
Pavement.
That's a good question. I think pavement, as it stands today, doesn't it end at the pump station, or does it end at Dequinder? I'm not, that's a good question.
We'll look into it.
It will be Dequinder. It will be Dequinder.
Okay. Is that it? Anything to add before, you have questions?
The question is, are these dates going to be posted for residents?
And after this question, if you have any questions, just come on up one at a time, please. Did you hear the question? Will these dates be posted?
And one of the, one of the things, I will apologize, this has evolved into a pretty exciting but pretty complicated process, and we deal with what we call schedules and schedule updates, and they're very complicated. And right now, we're in the process of updating our schedule to reflect this new two crews working winters with this new pavement detail, full width pavement versus part width. So my staff is currently working on that, and those schedules will be made available to the township. They're going to be attending our monthly meetings. So you know, that process of keeping people kind of updated shouldn't be too difficult, and we can do that.
Okay. If you have a question, come on up.
I live right on 24 Mile Road, so I'm quite well-impacted, and I'm glad to see it coming. Couple of questions I have, are there going to be any improvements in sewers or drainage sewers, like see that ditch go away?
No, unfortunately, I don't see any change really to the design of the road and drainage other than the paving itself.
Okay, so, but we're going to be able to get in and out, other than when you're directly in front of our house, and I'll go up north and stay at the cottage, right?
Yeah, we're going to maintain access to all businesses and residents, but it'll always be eastbound until, like Mr. Jabber mentioned, once we get through it, we'll be full with gravel surface and then eventually full with paving surface.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes.
Anyone else?
I'm right there.
A little confused on the timing. If you go over to Mound Road on 24, they got a sign saying it's going to be closed from Mound to Van Dyke Monday. Is that when that part of the project's going to start?
Yeah, there's several operations. There's the tunnels under the major drains, I think it's called the Kingsbury Drain, and that tunnel portion, which is, let's call it a, just to be conservative, a month start to finish, to put the shafts down, to put the tunnel under the drain, and then open it back to, at some point when that second crew starts, then it'll be open to eastbound only. So that, there is going to be a road closure at each, I think there's six drain crossings, and then there's the M53 tunnel where we have to tunnel under the viadocks. So when those activities occur, some of them will require full closure because of just the depth and magnitude of the shafts in the tunnel. So I think that's what you're referring to.
Okay.
My wife and I live Woodbridge in Whitby, right by the pump station you're referring to on 24. I don't know, this is so much for those of you who are perhaps the engineering, with the new safety island that was constructed on Dequinder, which makes using the trail lot safer, has there been any consideration while 24 is torn up to putting a safety island right by the pump station, by Whitby?
No, there has not.
What would be the process of sending out bids, doing the engineering study? Is it something that we can look into?
Well, at this point right now, the plans have already been completed, and the contract is between DWSD and Rickman to construct the water main. The side benefit of the water main project is the fact that the township was able to work with the Macomb County Department of Roads, DWSD and Rickman, to get a full width pavement restoration rather than just half width. But it's not involving any redesign of roads or adjustment of any of the existing drainage systems that are out there.
If possible, I would ask that it, you know, be considered, because obviously the cost would be a lot less when the pavement is torn up, and I don't know what the right of way is, but for the safety of the MOT users. If the right of way is there and it doesn't involve any modification to the sewers, maybe you might want to consider it. And that was just my only point.
Thanks.
Rick, there's also a gentleman behind you. I don't know if they, maybe they want to come on up whenever they're...
Hi.
Hello.
Will there be water disruptions?
We're in a, kind of been looking at all the connections and identify when and if and who will be impacted. And once we develop that plan, we're going to notify the township and the residents. I don't have the answer to that. I would anticipate there will be some. The goal typically is to do them at night, between, say midnight, a lot of times if they're major disruptions, more than an hour or so, we'll either do them at night or do it off-peak usage hours. But if there's going to be a disruption, there will be an advance notice given to those residents that will be impacted. And again, we'll work with the township and with the city to minimize the impact as much as possible. A lot of times we'll give you notice to say, okay, between 10 and 2 o'clock, your water's going to be off. So we'll typically wait till after the morning rush hour or before the evening, unless there's something unanticipated, but that's going to be the goal, and we'll get advance notice to those that are impacted.
Okay.
If and when.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I guess it probably is easier.
Just a couple of questions. I guess this is my understanding that this water main is only going to go to the pumping station, which is just west of the trail, the Orchard Trail?
Correct.
Stopping? And when will we know whether they're going to pave it all the way to Dequinder? I live just east of Dequinder on 24 Mile Road.
Get there?
When do we get there? That's a good answer. I think that's a Stathakis answer.
It's an honest answer.
It's an honest answer. I'm not saying I can't give you an exact, if we will do it right now.
I think the old, working on the funding, right? It's always the issue.
Question for you is, what kind of schedule will you maintain during the day, start and stop times? How early will you start? How late will you work?
Typically, on the main, there's several crews, mainline, there's the tunnel crews, and then there's the paving crews. Typically, the mainline crew is going to be seven, to say, 7 to 6 p.m. Occasionally, it'll run a little later if there's, if you're going under a critical utility, or there's a, trying to cross a roadway, or trying to get somebody's access open back up, we'll work late. But typically, we're going to work seven, 10-hour shifts, 7 to 5:30, 6 p.m., Monday through Friday. Saturdays are typically a data catch-up. You might see small crews looking for problems or access issues. So expect five, five-day work weeks, 10 hours a day.
Okay, because we live directly across from Peace Lutheran Church and school, and I know that that's going to have a huge impact on traffic for those folks, and for me, who live directly across the street from them, and we already have quite a bit of traffic because of school. And then with the 25 mile road project, we've really been impacted all summer long. So just wondering what kind of noise and disruption, in addition to not having a westbound lane, we will have.
Well, it's large equipment, so it's, you know, this newer equipment is certainly quieter than it was, you know, five or 10 years ago, but it is very large equipment. It's, if you've been there, you can expect that's the type of noise you'll hear. The mainline crew has a, you know, that big yellow, that's called the Big Yellow Escavator. That's probably your noisiest piece of equipment, or the, unfortunately, the Miosha standards require these backup alarms, those tend to be a little bit annoying. So, but that's probably the type of noise levels you'll be hearing if you get near that, where they're working now.
So the project that starts on Monday is just for the Kingsbury Drain, which will be from Rouen East to Van Dyke, is that correct? That closure?
And that closure should be short-term. I don't know the duration, but it's closure enough to get, it's a big shaft. Our goal is to, once that shaft's installed, to allow for eastbound, and we're going to work with the city and the county also, you know, we're going to make every effort that, you know, once it's safe for traffic, we'll open it back up to eastbound traffic.
Eastbound only, though?
Only, yes. Once you start to see work activity in that area, it will be eastbound only.
It will not be next Monday, but I guess the Monday after.
16th, is that the schedule that's posted?
I think tentatively on 16, because we're still...
It won't be this Monday, I don't believe.
It'll be a week from Monday, then.
It's that same crew that's working at Romeo Plank, they're going to, we expect about another seven days of, another week of work, and then they'll move over to the next shaft.
So then, we would expect sometime after the 16th to have only eastbound lanes from Mound to Van Dyke, is that correct?
Well, you'll probably be a period, maybe a month period, or maybe slightly less than that, but without getting too much detail, I don't have the schedule in front of me, where the road will be closed, putting the shaft down, but once the shaft is complete, I'm hopeful, and Bill, you may be able to answer that, but I'm hopeful we're going to get the road open to eastbound only.
Okay.
I have my general superintendents here in the audience. While he's doing that, one thing I, Bill is our general superintendent, he will be in the field full-time, and he certainly will be handling complaints or public issues. And one thing I really want to stress, it probably now is a perfect time, is please call, you know, our main office. If you have any issues, I can give that number, if you'd want to write it down, it's 586-739-5210. Really, the best way to get a quick response is to call our firm, mention, you know, your name, your phone number, and what it's regarding, and those calls will be directly to Bill. And quite frankly, if you don't get the solution you're looking for, ask for me personally, and I will be sure to be there and make sure these get addressed for you.
Our flyers already have my number on it.
Good, good. So go ahead, Bill.
This week, we, we have the date, the 13th, on those message boards, because we're going to start, because we are going to start some activity this week. The actual boring probably won't start till the following week, but we're going to be dropping off equipment, casings, and shoring boxes, things like that. But we'll have all signage up, and barricades, and flag people, and all that sort of thing.
Is the road going to be closed this coming week? Or is it just going to be kind of temporarily?
Right, we'll have the Type III barricades, those are the big ones with the three bars on them. You know, they'll be off to the side of the road. When we actually go to shut down the road, we'll be pulling those out, but we'll have lead-in signs showing the detours that will be coming up and all that kind of thing.
I have a question regarding, regarding the drainage, the sewer lines, and then the water lines as far as drainage from, excuse me, drainage from the stormwater versus drainage for sewage. Are they going to, is that going to impact on any of those two lines?
There should, yes, yes. During the construction, during the actual construction activities, there will be some minor impact to the stormwater. I mean, obviously, we will disrupt the ditches and restore the ditches, so you know, it's our goal to always make sure that those get restored daily so that there's no impact to rain events or stormwater. The sanitary, I can envision that there'll be any disruption or impact to the sanitary systems. So no, there should be no issues with sanitary, but if in the event somebody has a problem, again, make sure we get notified.
Are you replacing any of those lines?
No, no, there's, other than drive culverts that may get removed... No, no. There's, other than drive culverts that may get removed during the paving and replaced, pretty much as it is currently, there's no new stormwater construction on this project, or drainage, stormwater drainage on this project.
I live on Gilford Lake, that's why I'm concerned about the drainage. Because we act as a conduit as far as drainage from the other, from the rest of the subdivision. I noticed at times when it's raining, like I, there's always a lot of water in that part of the drainage.
Well, if you suspect there's a drainage issue, certainly this could be a time where it could be corrected. So I guess I'd suggest you give us a call and/or the township. We certainly would be happy to take your call and meet on-site, and just take a look at it, and see if there's a, either it's a plugged culvert or a bad culvert, if it's going to get replaced, or if it needs to be replaced, we could address it then. But...
Oh, you'd like to?
We'd be happy to meet out there, meet you out there, Bill. We'll meet you out there, and we'll bring, we'll bring the township if, if they need to be, you know, brought out. But if...
We'll get your name, so we can get Mr. Bob Hoffner to go out there and take a look at it. And if he can't do anything about it, I'll call you on your cellphone, Mr. Mancini. Now, we'll, Dave Miller from DPW is here. He'll get your name and phone number tonight, ma'am, and we'll come out and look at it. Okay? But Mr. Mancini's right, if we do have some drainage issues, this would be the time to correct those issues as best as we can.
So that means you'll be starting at 1:00 AM?
No, no. What it means is that we're going to come out and take a look at it. And I wish I could say more, but I can until we evaluate it. And Mr. Miller from our DPW is here tonight, and he'll get your name and number. Thank you.
Come on, come on. I'm sorry.
24 Mile Road between Chainer and Hayes, I'm not in a subdivision, I'm by myself. Is that going to, our driveway is like a gravel to the main road. Is that going to be blocked at any time?
Are you on the north side or the south side of 24 Mile?
North.
North side. Yeah, so there will be, there will be a point, I got to believe, because it's a large operation with big pipe, that your driveway would be closed. Now, what we would, we would do...
That's the only way I can go in and out.
Yes. What we do is, we will coordinate with you, make sure you're aware that, hey, it's going to be closed. And if there's any way we can maintain access, we'll do that. If not, we'll just make sure your vehicle's out and/or you're not home when we do the crossing.
I work, my husband works, my daughter's in and out. She's in college, so...
Yeah, we'll have to make sure we can coordinate the best we can to, it just depends, if there's another way we can provide access, we'll do that. If there's just no way we could provide an alternate access, we would ask that you park...
Well, we can, the house is set back.
Yep.
So it's, it's not about parking, it's just getting in and out.
Yeah, there might be a short period of time, for the time it takes to lay that pipe across your drive approach, that either you have to park out front, or we do it when nobody's home. So we'll, Bill, again, make sure we get your name and phone number, and we'll coordinate that with you.
In there?
Yep, yep. Because we, there is going to be, on some of these single entrance drive approaches or business approaches, there's going to be a short period of time to lay that pipeline, that we may or may not be able to maintain access.
Yeah, I mean, we have our gravel driveway, but we have little ditches. I mean, I wonder if we could just go around it or something. But also, we put our own driveway in, I mean, sidewalk, in front of our house, because it was mandatory. Is that going to be ripped up, or?
Certainly, if it's in the right of way, yeah, if it's in the right of way, there's a chance that it gets damaged. If it does, it gets replaced.
Okay, and then?
But hopeful, we're hopeful not to, but if it, if it does, it would get replaced.
And I have one other question. Speaking of drainage, on 24 Mile Road, right next to me is a subdivision, and there's a big drainage thing where the water, you know, goes, and it gets real, it overflows every time it floods. Are those going to be looked at at all, or no? They're not going to do anything with the drainage issues?
I think if you have a specific drainage concern, where you see flooding...
Yes.
Again, make sure you give Dave a call, and he'll, he'll follow up and go out and take a look at it. And hopefully, there is a solution.
Yeah, I mean, there's other houses, too, but we get it the worst, because we have a walkout basement.
Sure. It could be a drainage problem, it's something...
It's just not wide enough. It just can't, the capacity of water, when it floods, it just can't handle it, so it just goes on each side.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, hair strain, yes, a hair strain, so...
Yeah, and again, I, you know, Dave can take a look at it. If there is a problem that can be corrected, now's the time.
Talk to you, and, I don't want...
Yep.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. We are on the north side of 24 Mile Road. The pipeline is on the north side, which makes it a little more difficult if you're accessing from the north, the, because obviously, the eastbound lane's going to be maintained. But the paving will, the entire paving and ditch restoration will be both lanes, east and westbound, full with reconstruction.
Hi, my name is Lynn Fries. I'm right in front of where you're going to be digging for the Kingsbury Drain. I was talking to Rick on the way in, and he said that you will be shoring up the hole that you're, that you'll be digging into, so there will be little concern of collapse of the surrounding ground?
There will be no concern. I mean, we, you know, it'll be properly shored and designed and protected, yes.
Okay. And you'd mentioned the hours of work, and that was for the, I heard it as being the part where you'll be laying the drain. As far as this digging goes, will that still be on that same schedule?
Typically, again, we typically work five, 10-hour days, Monday through Friday. Saturdays are sometimes a make-up day, or just, we call it a catch-up day, to make, catch up on complaints or issues that need to be corrected. There will be occasion, if there's a problem, you know, protecting a utility, or trying to get traffic back open, or making a water main connection. There are times we'll run 24/7. Typically, we'll get word out and get approval from the township to let them know, hey, we really need to work around the clock. That's, I don't anticipate that, but some of your road crossings, major road crossings like Van Dyke, we may be working around the clock. That's not uncommon. But I doubt you'll see it off between the major intersections, north-south.
Okay. On the day that the work starts, I work, so I'll be coming home, you know, anytime between 6:00 and 8:00 o'clock at night. So will someone contact me if I won't have access to my driveway prior to me pulling in and seeing that I don't?
Yes. I mean, and again, we, I would expect that you'll hear from us several days before we get there to let you know, hey, we're anticipating closing your driveway between such and such a time. And you should know that, and, you know, there should be no reason that you come home to a surprise, that you cannot get into your driveway. If that happens, please let me know about it.
Okay.
Because someone will be there immediately.
All right.
Make sure you get in.
The scope of the digging and laying this part of it, that's no different than the rest of it, as far as the water shut-off, and water compromise, and pressure and all that?
This should not impact, other than some of the tie-ins, there may, there may be a water impact. We're looking at ways to either eliminate it or minimize it. And once we do that, once we have a good plan, let's call it, for making all the connections, if there's going to be an impact, we'll definitely let you know. We're going to try to make it to the less, what do you call it, the most convenient time.
Right.
Sometimes that's between midnight and 7:00 in the morning.
Right. Okay, excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes.
Mrs. Feiler and I were just talking about updating the public, maybe on a weekly basis. We're just kind of talking out loud. But you think it might be a good idea, maybe, say, every Tuesday by noon, maybe we do an update on the www.shelbytwp.org website? So if everybody wants an update, they'll know that at minimum, on Tuesday, by Tuesday at noon, there will be something new written. And it could be three or four times a week, it might be six times a week. But at minimum, every Tuesday, we'll have the up-to-date, here's what's happening on 24 Mile Road. What do you think about that? Because you would be the contact person.
To get the updates?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I certainly would be, would like to sit in with our staff, so that our staff can update you as to schedules and such. I don't have those type of specifics, but we'll work, somebody with our, like, our project manager will work with maybe somebody in the township...
Perfect.
To make sure you have those updates correct.
How about weekly updates?
Yes, yes. In fact, I think some of the township officials are joining us in our bi-weekly progress meetings, and we'll try to keep that synergy going.
Mr. Grobe, are you okay with that? Okay. So the clerk's office will help coordinate that as well. And Mr. Viviano, I know if there's anything you need, we'll, we'll give you that on the website. Okay?
Yeah, we probably, that would be a good, good time to establish what we're, what we're updating, progress, where we're at.
Okay.
So we'll kind of identify what, what we're going to update on, and then we'll make sure that gets done.
The website is www.shelbytwp.org. Again, that's www.shelbytwp.org.
And I think that is a good, good idea. If we can identify where we're working, between what mile roads, what's, what's the anticipated, you know, some of the major items that I think would be helpful to the, to the public, we can do that.
Also, weekly, our Facebook page will be updated, and Twitter, whatever that is, I don't know how to do that, but I guess we have a Twitter account, that'll be updated, too. So, okay, good. Anyone else?
Clarify, when you said that, when the road is eastbound traffic only, and then maybe at some point there will be no pavement whatsoever, but it'll be drivable still? Is that going to be during winter months, when there's snow? And what about snow removal, and plowing, and clearing, and all that fun stuff?
The road will be really under our maintenance. Obviously, if the road commission sees something they don't like, they're going to, they're going to either remind us or do it themselves. But we will have people full-time maintaining that roadway. And it will be a, let's call it a gravel. So it's actually going to be a little bit better than gravel. It's those asphalt millings, which, quite frankly, pack up almost back to, like asphalt. But it'll be well-maintained. Again, any complaints, please call us. My staff will be on it. There will be people on it, you know, full-time, to make sure that that road is maintained to the standards that both the township and the county require.
All right. And then, just to clarify, all your work is going to be done on the north side of 24 Mile Road?
There are some major valve chambers that really take up the whole road. So there will be some spots that we are working, installing these valves, we call them valve vaults. I think there's three major valve vaults, about one-third of each part of the project. So there will be some work that's the whole road, but...
At some point, most of us will expect to not have driveway access, then?
No, no, no. Everybody will have driveway access. There'll just be a brief period when we have to lay the pipeline across your driveway, if you're on the north side. Yeah, and we'll coordinate that with you, to where it should be virtually no inconvenience to you. Whether it's at another entrance right next to it, or just make sure you have your vehicle out before we cross, and then you have your vehicle, ability to get back in.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Anything to add, Mrs. Feiler, Mr. Grobe? No?
She's happy it's being done.
Mrs. Feiler says she's happy it's finally being done. We've been talking about it for how long, 16 years, or something like that? Mr. Viviano, anything to add? Mr. Miller from our DPW, we're good? Any other questions? Come on up.
My questions are, number one, are you guys going to post where the project is, so that those of us who abut the project can see what part of our property is going to be affected?
I'm not sure there's really any posting that, other than traffic control. But right now, I don't anticipate any work outside of the right of way, which is typically sidewalk to, you know, edge of, sidewalk to edge of sidewalk. So there should...
Oh, I have no sidewalks, so I'm curious where it runs across my property.
Yeah, whatever the typical right of way width, I...
33 feet, unless you're in a subdivision?
No, I'm not. I'm on 24 Mile Road, I'm a standard...
It could be 33 feet.
From the center of the road?
Yes.
Okay. Secondly, have you guys hired an arboriculture firm to do an impact of how it's going to affect the trees along the route that the...
I can't say that, I'd have to ask my staff if we've hired an arbor...
I mean, we have, we have, 24 Mile Road has that section between Dequinder, or actually, closer to Shelby, over to Mount, that has oak trees that could not be replaced in probably five lifetimes.
There's going to, you know, obviously, laying this big pipe with this big equipment, there will be some pruning. I don't know if there's any intent to do any tree removal, maybe we're in some limited areas. But there will be some tree pruning. There's just no question.
Sure, I understand when you're moving excavators that large.
We put, we put the pipe in the road to save the trees. That's one of the reasons...
Right, well, I guess, my experience has been, I was negatively impacted by the sewer main project that went from 23 Mile Road to 25 Mile Road, and then west to Eisenhower High School. And additionally, I was negatively impacted from the project to run the sewer from the 24 Mile Road where, across from Cherry Creek, up to the new downtown that never developed. And then also, Alexander Woods Construction. I have trees that cannot be replaced. They're 100-year-old red maple trees. I'm concerned about having further damage. I've already...
Again, I would encourage you to contact Bill, my general superintendent, and he can meet, and show us specifically. And we're going to make every effort to do his least impact.
Right.
But there will be, I mean, we're, and we've looked at, you know, what are our lifting heights, what does a machine really need, not just to go in and clear?
Well, I guess my question would also be, once you establish the areas where you're going to be doing the work, is there going to be some construction barriers put in to keep equipment from essentially running over the root system of trees, or banging into them, things like that?
We typically don't, but we can, we can look at that. I mean, certainly, if adding snow fence or something to try to protect, or some ribbon to try to protect some of the trees. I know which area you're talking about, the canopy is really low, and it certainly has to be pruned back. So we typically get a standard height, what the machine needs, and that's the extent of the pruning. But we could take a look at that.
All my concern is more is with soil compaction and damage to the root systems. And then, well, a typical example, the Alexander Woods project, they were doing underground, past my house. I was at work, I had an agreement with them, as to where they would or would not go. The snow fence went up. Snow fence doesn't win against a large excavator. I came home, it was parked next to my house.
Yeah. We're going to make...
I'd like to see something more substantial to make that delineation. How can I put it? I would like to see it not be something that could be taken down easily and put up, back up by the end of the day after said damage was done.
And we'll, again, we'll look at each area and each instance. These trees are close to the road. Hopefully, the, the construction doesn't impact them, but we'll take a look at it. I mean, again, we, there's a fine line between impacting the root system and maintaining its safety of the, of the crews and the excavation. So we'll look at that.
Do you have something in place to, to find a remedy in the, in the event that there is damage?
If, if a tree is damaged and it's too large to replace, it'll have to be removed.
Right, but is there, I mean...
There'd be a replacement. Obviously, it wouldn't be a large tree, but it would be replaced with a small tree, sure.
Thank you.
Right now, our goal is not to remove trees, so...
Right, oh, I realize that.
And I mean, there might be, there might be a tree that gets impacted. We'll, we'll try to address it at the time.
I mean, it would be nice to see all of the trees, you know, not be impacted at all. The ones that I'm most concerned about are the ones that are very important. The ones that I'm most concerned about are the ones that are very important to my property. I would like to take extra measures, I'd be happy to work with you guys to do that, to see that that does not...
Again, we'd certainly be happy to meet you and our staff...
All good business cards from all concerned parties before I leave tonight.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Those of us who do live right on the north, north side of 24-mile road, my mailbox is on the road, so will I be responsible for removing my mailbox, or you will remove my mailbox?
No, we typically will remove them and put them up temporarily, maybe one direction or the other, or we'll put them in something temporary to hold them, and then immediately, within the same day, we'll put them back up.
Okay.
If it doesn't happen the same day, please call us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No other questions? Well, I, oh, one other thing, Mr. Jobber, I've got a couple of questions, actually, today on the phone, they wanna know exactly, what will the Detroit Water and Sewage Department do on this project? Because obviously, Mr. Mancini is handling most of the road reconstruction, what will your department actually do?
Our department will do the quality assurance, the contractor will do the daily quality control, we'll go out every once in a while, we'll make sure that things are being done per contract, so we are the quality assurance on this job. We have inspector, and we do have a signed project engineer also on this job.
Other questions, anybody? Well, first of all, I wanna thank Detroit Water and Sewage Department Director, Ms. Suma Cormick, for making this possible, because she really did take the initiative to, to make sure that we had this opportunity. I wanna thank Mr. Steve Mancini from Rickman Construction, you came up with a lot of great cost-saving ideas that made this possible. I wanna thank the county, Mr. Hoffner, and Mr. Mark Hackle, for, you know, hanging in there with us to make sure that we got the agreement that we needed. Janet Dunn, supervisor from McComb Township, for her involvement as well, and everyone at Fossil County Associates for making sure that all the details, the i's were dotted and t's were crossed, and of course, our lawyer, Mr. Rob Huth, who stuck with us the whole way, too. It was absolutely a team effort, and I think it started with a few of the trustees, a couple of them are here tonight, Mrs. Filer and Mr. Grove, insisting that if we're gonna do this project, we need to do both lanes, not just one, and, you know, so it started there, and I think it's gonna end up with, with a beautiful road, and hopefully, it'll be done in two construction cycles. So, on behalf of the entire Board of Trustees, I wanna thank all of you for coming here tonight, and ladies and gentlemen, thank you for listening, and until the next board meeting, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.